I'm gonna call the meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to conduct the roll call. Madam, city clerk.
Good evening. Mayor Protem Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, madam. We now have our flag salute. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Protem Cuevas, followed by Pastor Matthew Harbison of Lawndale Westland Church.
Please stand, right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice above. Please remain standing.
Almighty God, we gather here today and we say thank you for the opportunity to have a building, to meet in. We thank you for the opportunity to have the technology to stream this out to other people who can't make it. I ask that the people who are here tonight, both in front and in the back, might be civil and that we could continue to conduct business here that would be for the benefit of the city and all of its residents. I also ask God that you would continue to work in the lives of the people who are here, that we might continue to be building this community up so that we might be able to live together in harmony. And may we be able to look past some of our differences and enjoy just the opportunity to be in Lawndale. I thank you for this time and may we have a good evening. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor for being here tonight. Thank you for those words of inspiration. Thank you, sir. Okay. Let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our Sheriff Department first. Who's gonna be with us? Okay, our new captain is gonna give the report. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Esteemed members of the city council. I am here tonight to present the public safety report for November 20th through December 4th. And I will begin by discussing our notable arrests and investigations. Deputy Fegino conducted a traffic stop of a vehicle on Rosecrans Avenue, east of Inglewood Avenue, for vehicle code violations. Deputy Fegino contacted the driver and learned that he was on probation with search conditions that included a Fourth Amendment waiver. Following the traffic stop, Deputy Fegino conducted a probation compliance search of the driver's residence and recovered three unregistered firearms. The suspect driver was arrested and booked at South Los Angeles Station. The next one was Deputy Vincent was on routine patrol when she observed a suspicious vehicle near the intersection of 170th Street and Frumona Avenue. As Deputy Vincent tried to investigate the situation, the driver of the vehicle reversed at a high rate of speed. Deputy Vincent was unable to locate the vehicle. However, a short time later, Deputy Vincent was flagged down by a resident who saw the driver throw a firearm out of the vehicle window. Deputy Vincent recovered the firearm and the case is still actively being investigated. The third incident, deputies responded to the 16300 block of Inglewood Avenue regarding a call for service in which a vehicle theft just occurred. The deputies were initially unable to locate the stolen vehicle. However, the victim called several days later to report that part of his stolen vehicle was posted for sale on an internet marketplace. Deputies followed up with the victim and the case was forwarded to the Task Force for Regional Auto Theft Prevention, our trap unit, for further investigation. Just a couple more. We had a lot of good things going on. On December 2nd, at approximately 7:30 PM, deputies were in the 4200 block of 163rd Street regarding a vandalism just occurred call for service. The informant stated he saw several males spray painting graffiti on the wall. Deputy Lara was searching the area for the suspect's vehicle when he observed two suspicious males walking on the sidewalk in the 16800 block of Grevelea Avenue. Deputy Lara detained the two males who matched the description of the individuals associated with the suspect's vehicle. Deputy Lara recovered two unregistered firearms during the detention and arrested one of the males for multiple weapons violations. On November 26th, deputies responded to the 4600 block of Rosecrans Avenue regarding a possible gunshot victim call for service. The deputies arrived and determined a shooting had occurred at the location, but the victim was transported prior to their arrival to the hospital. Through teamwork and investigative excellence, the suspects in the incident were detained, or excuse me, identified. Within two days, one of the suspects was arrested. On the following Friday, the other suspect was located and taken into custody. Detectives worked diligently on the case from the time that they were notified of the incident, which included authoring several search warrants and coordinating with Major Crimes Bureau detectives to locate the suspects. Detectives presented the case to the district attorney's office for attempt murder charges and they were filed at Torrance Superior Court. So we were happy to see that. Okay, regarding our traffic citations, approximately 60 traffic citations were issued during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations, including speeding, failure to stop at a stop sign, loud exhaust, and tinted windows. And two of those vehicles were referred to the state referee for modified emission systems. And then just a quick public service announcement. There has been recent concern in the surrounding neighborhoods regarding suspicious individuals going door-to-door offering unsolicited services. I want to remind Lawndale residents to be cautious about who they open their door for and allow inside their residence. Please call the Lawndale Service Center to report any suspicious individuals and be prepared to provide a brief description and an explanation as to why you believe that individuals are suspicious and why they might be engaged in criminal activity. And then lastly, as a reminder, this is gonna be my first Coffee with the Cop, which is planned for next Wednesday and is being coordinated in conjunction with the City of Lawndale Municipal Services Department. The event is planned for Wednesday, December 13th, from 9:00 to 10:00 AM in the Target Starbucks located at 14310 Hawthorne Boulevard. And this concludes my long-winded report. And I would be happy to answer any questions from the city council.
Captain, thank you for your report. Give us your name, just for the audience. We are familiar with you.
Captain Nicole Palomino.
All right. This is our new captain, ladies and gentlemen. In case you have not met her, and I want to thank you for that report. Let's see if there's any comments by the council.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say thank you for that long-winded report. That's exactly what the residents keep asking me for, is what is going on with our city? Because a lot of them are on Nextdoor and they're getting pieces and glimpses and some things aren't exactly true and you just gave everything. And I appreciate you coming up and telling us because we see you, we see the presence, we see the helicopter, we see different things. But here's our source right here. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments?
And by the way, I call it Coffee with the Captain, myself.
Okay, I like that.
Right.
Thank you, Captain, for that inaugural report. We appreciate it. Thank you. Let's hear from Los Angeles County Fire Department Battalion Chief Martin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I got called away to a fire.
That's it, you just left?
Yeah, I'll fill in. I'll try to do my best.
Okay, thank you.
So for the month of November, we have three rescue and emergency medical service incidents, four hazardous conditions, no fire calls, six good intent calls, nine special incident types. For a total, for the month, a total of service calls, 204 total calls for service. And I don't have any specifics on the person sleeping. Let's see, we had several false alarms and then looks like that's all the information that the fire department's provided. It's really general.
Okay. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Let's move on to oral communications. Oral communications, you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you can line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you approach the podium, if you would start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called. Just simply approach the podium after the person before you have concluded. Yes, sir?
I am Ray Haller, homeowner in southwest Lawndale, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And thank you for a number of things because I really appreciate the graffiti program. Excellent graffiti program. A fellow named Thomas covered up some graffiti. A lot of times it happens so fast, it's like I cover before I even call it in. So thank you so much for the continuing of that because we have a problem down there at a condon at 170th frequency. And so, moving on to the automated license plate recognition program is commented on last time. I've done a little bit of, I had like seven questions last time, done a little bit of investigation myself and got some information from Deputy Samuel Paul and also some feedback from Mr. Reyes here. And haven't processed it all yet, but I think a couple of questions are still kind of looming. And the first one is, and so they're leftover from the last meeting, and that is where the data and metrics would show how much crime is, if any, is solved and/or reduced by the use and expense of these systems. Now, the other larger issue here is that regarding access, because I believe that access is broader than has been reported to, in this forum that I've seen so far. And I think that's, we'll get to that a little later, hopefully with some more understanding. And then the other thing is that I'm concerned about, well, it relates, again, relates to access. So the last thing has to do with metrics. What metrics are, is the city going to track to make sure and decide whether the program is worth it, the expense, and I believe the intrusion on our privacy? Although, I must say, upon reviewing some of the videos from previous meetings, the city council and mayor has asked excellent questions. I've gotten very good cooperation from Mr. Reyes and also Deputy Samuel Paul. We had a good discussion. And Sergeant Smith has offered his consultation. Haven't taken advantage of that yet. I probably will. So I really appreciate all that interest. And so, just that I think that there are some, unfortunately, I think they're like some of the most important issues to be resolved and worked on. But I'm confident, optimistic that we're gonna get there. And so, thanks again for hearing me and all that you've done for that so far and everything you do for our city every day. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Matthew Harbison, Lawndale. Just want to say thank you for the angel tree lighting and the things that you guys put on this year. Really good program. And I appreciate it, just the things that you did for the community and ways for people to get together. So thank you for putting that on and making that happen. And I also just wanted to kind of express a concern that I'm seeing more people figure that red light doesn't mean stop. And I'm seeing, especially on Hawthorne Boulevard, Inglewood Avenue, a lot of people are just, it's getting close to red, nah, it's still red. Doesn't matter, I'm going through. And I've seen many near misses. I've seen a couple collisions. And I'm just hoping that, I don't know if it means more people out there or more sheriff department members, but just people watch out when you're driving, especially this time of year. But I know we've got a bad epidemic of people not stopping at red. So I don't know what Lawndale can do about that. But if we can be the thing that bucks the trend in the South Bay, then let's make that happen because I'd like our streets to be safe. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Dina, Lawndale resident. I just want to say thank you. Keep up the good work on especially the tinted windows. You know, it seems like everybody's hiding for some reason and that's where they find, seems like, the most guns and weapons in the vehicles. But I also wanted to touch base on the Alpers cameras. Not worried about the data. I don't know why so many people are. They don't keep the data. Glendale Today came out and said they're adding more Alpers cameras. Beverly Hills caught that killer that was killing homeless people and that other city official because of the cameras, the Alpers cameras. But to stand up here and just be all nervous about, you're tracked for everything today. I don't, no matter what. It's not, these cameras are nothing but a license plate reader. It doesn't mean anything. What is, like, so everybody's so nervous and gonna, you know, what are you hiding? There's nothing to hide. Not doing anything. There's nothing to worry about. They don't keep the data. The other agencies have gone on camera saying and explained everything too. They don't keep it. They don't track it. They're not, you know. So please, let's get over this Alpers thing. Don't worry about the data. We're all good.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close public comments and we'll bring up the dice for any comments from the council. Let's hear from Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight and those of you that are coming out just to even view our meeting. I appreciate everybody's presence. Mr. Haller, as far as graffiti goes, thank you. Lawndale does a really good job and works hard at trying to keep up. And as you know, sometimes it's a losing battle. And when we do see it there for a couple of days, know that we're just swamped trying to keep up. But yes, we appreciate the compliment and I'm sure that our department heads will be more than happy to share that with their employees that it is appreciated by the residents. So thank you. As far as your questions on the license plate readers, the first comment I had is I sure wish you would have been here the night that the presentation and the company was here to alleviate some of your concerns that you're having with them. I'm going to ask that if Sean would like to address any of your concerns now or maybe even the sergeant over here on the corner, if either one of them would like to say a word or two on some of the things that you brought up.
Mr. Mayor, council, we'll refer that to Mr. Reyes who's been working with them. We don't want to, it's not agendized. It's already been on the agenda. So we need to refer Mr. Reyes to Mr. Hall, and Sergeant Smith, they can meet with him and give him the information that is requested. Hopefully, that should satisfy it.
Thank you. Matthew, I agree with you. That event was pretty wonderful and I think it's still even growing. I think there were more people up here. In fact, I looked at our patches of snow that we actually had increased this year and I thought, my goodness, we could double it and we'd still have plenty of entertainment on it. So yes, I agree with you. And the stop, the stop sign stopping. I hope you come out to Coffee with the Cop and speak with our new team. They are hearing us. And so while we have their ear, let's start speaking up as a community on the issues and the concerns, not just of us that are sitting up here but also in the community. So please, join us and let them know what our concerns are. Dina, tinted windows, I'm with you completely. They scare me. I don't know what, and I can't make, if I'm pulling up to a stop sign and I can't see your eyes, there's a problem with it. And I just recently learned that now we're even tinting windshield which I just don't understand. But again, I'm there with you on the tinted windows. And I too am an advocate for these license plate readers. I think what we're going to find is with those license plate readers around the perimeter of our city, I think we're going to find some of these incidents that you just heard the captain speak about are going to be lessened because they're not going to want to be caught on those cameras because they don't want to be identified. So again, I'm an advocate for the license plate readers, just as you are. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Pat Kearney. Well, Councilwoman Gorman said most of it, but I want to thank the three individuals who spoke. And the angel tree was fantastic. I enjoyed it. And with that, I'll pass it on. Councilwoman Suarez.
I'd also like to thank everybody that came out. And with regards to the license plate readers, I think it's a fair question to ask for the data. You know, we know the immediate benefits of it, but you know, with anything, I mean, for example, if you're getting medical treatment, you know, you could get the medicines and then there's also side effects that later on that could, you know, affect you. So I think it's a fair question to ask for those and I would like to also see that as well because there's always tweaks that can be done to the process if we know, you know, the data and metric and what it's proving. And, you know, maybe later on, for example, the retention period could be shortened or something to that effect. So I do think it's a fair question to ask. But with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Protem.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. And my colleagues already asked a question and replied to the question, so no need to repeat.
Okay. I too want to thank those who came out tonight and those who had the opportunity to speak. Ray, thank you once again for the graffiti, particularly on 170th Street. Our staff, they do a great job keeping up with graffiti. As you know, it's hard sometimes to keep up with it because they're out in the middle of the night or what have you. You wake up in the morning, especially that one wall on 170th. It's constantly getting hit. And so our staff is constantly working to abate their graffiti. But I thank you for recognizing that. Their hard work to keep that wall clear. Also, I will join the comments with the Councilwoman Suarez that I too, although I do support the cameras, obviously, I voted for them, but I'm a strong supporter of privacy rights. So I too believe this is a fair question and in particular the question about the matrix in which we decide how, if the program is successful. Because we don't want to have a program just for the sake of having a program because first of all, it costs the city revenue. It's not a free program, right? Although we pay for this out of, I believe, ARPA funds. But going forth, of course, it won't be a free program if we continue. So of course, we have to make sure we do the cost-benefit analysis to make sure that this is a program that's beneficial and not just a feel-good program. Now, I understand that it was used, of course, we heard the news in Beverly Hills recently. Great, wonderful. And that's what it's designed to do. And as long as that's what it does and that's all it does, I'm okay with it, right? And so, but I too would like to just see the data. But I do see it as a viable tool to catch those who are involved in crime as we saw there in Beverly Hills. But I like to see the data itself so that we, going forward, after this program has expired, will be able to make an informed decision on continuing it or what have you. So thank you for that. Reverend Harbison, thank you for recognizing the staff and the volunteers. I think he left. The staff and, there you go. The staff and the volunteers at the Angel Tree Lighting Event. And yes, the red light cameras, we have to be, of course, vigilant on that, not the red light cameras, the red stop lights that people are failing to stop at. It's not really, it's not a, it's not even really just a South Bay issue. More and more, I don't know if it's something that's just happening, but I work in LA and you, after it's your turn to go, it used to be like one or two cars and most of the time they're clearing the intersection. But now you have these whole trains and, you know, of cars. And of course, not only does that create, you know, traffic conflicts but also road rage, you know, as well, right? And so I don't know if there's something we can do about as a community and as the law enforcement community because it's not just the City of Lawndale. This seems like this is a new thing. And another thing that's a new thing that I've seen, those middle lanes with the orange lanes, it's starting to be used as regular lanes. Now, we don't really have those in the City of Lawndale, but in a lot of cities I've seen those have been used as regular lanes, like a third lane instead. And sometimes there's conflict when someone's going north and south and decides, hey, this is an extra lane that's open and there's a conflict. So I'm with you with that, Reverend. So thank you for bringing that up. And I didn't mention the license plates. And that's all I have. And with that, we'll close public comments and comments from the council and we will move our agenda. We are now on the consent calendar.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I am getting a text from a resident that our council meeting is not televised. Is there a way that we can look and see that it is going across the airwaves?
Mayor, council, Ray Latt's gonna check on that one and verify it. Thank you.
I'll talk to you about that later. About something later. Okay, so we're now on. Oh, okay. Well, you're probably just taking a second. Well, we want to make sure if we're not that the residents have.
Mayor, council, it's being taped, so, I mean, if, so we can move forward with the proceeding.
It's on. You're okay? We're good? Okay. Okay, all right. We will, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. Absolutely. Okay, let's move our agenda to item F, which is our consent calendar. Item 1, 2, 3. Is there any?
I'll motion if there's no questions.
Okay. Has been motioned that we approve the consent calendar by Cuevas and seconded by Suarez. Any discussion on the motion? See, now with the council, please vote on the motion.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for selection of projects for the fiscal year 2024-25 program year, Community Development Block Grant Programming.
Mr. Mayor, council, we're going to need to pull this item. We'll have to bring it back in two weeks because we had to renotice, lacked, we have to be consistent with our noticing. It was not exactly the 14 days, so we'll have to.
Okay, we'll renotice that and postpone it to a further hearing. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is also a public hearing. Case number 2319, consideration of adoption of a comprehensive update to the city's general plan and adoption of associated environmental impact reports. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council and Ms. Mayor, Paul Miles. We have de novo consultant, de novo planning group, who is going to be presenting the general plan update for 2045. This is a consideration and adoption of a comprehensive update to the city's general plan 2045 and adoption of associated environmental impact report. We have Amanda Tropiano and Ashley Brodkin will be presenting the project. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're excited to present an overview of your general plan update project. So we do have a brief presentation and are available to answer any questions that you might have. So with that said, let me introduce myself again. I'm Amanda Tropiano, a principal with de novo planning group. I've had the privilege of working with the city of Lawndale and your excellent staff for the better part of a few years on this important project. We are going to give you an overview of what's brought us here tonight for your consideration. So I'll give a brief overview of the timeline. Then I'll be turning it over to Ashley so she can talk specifically about the approach to developing the general plan policy document, preparing the environmental impact report, where we're headed from here, and then turn it back over to Jared for staff's recommendations. So with that said, some of you may be familiar with the work efforts that have led to this important moment. But starting in late 2020, the city embarked on an effort to establish existing conditions, understand trends and projections on where the city would be headed over the next 20 years. So we spent the majority of that early time really focusing on setting the baseline conditions for understanding how we can make decisions to influence the future of Lawndale. We then spent some serious time working diligently with your staff to prepare your housing element update, which I know has been presented under separate cover for the planning commission and city council's adoption previously. That effort was unique and it required special dedicated attention for that short period of time, really culminating in adoption of the housing element in 2022. That allowed us to pivot back to the comprehensive update for your general plan and initiate that environmental review. We spent most of this year, 2020, preparing those documents, circulating them for public review and comment, and then, of course, here before you tonight to present the document and the material for your consideration and potential adoption. Moving forward into the early part of next year, we will continue the implementation of the key actions associated with the general plan, specifically updating the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan and preparing focused updates to your zoning code so that all of your documents are consistent and working together to achieve the future of Lawndale. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Ashley for the rest of the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So the general plan is a comprehensive policy document that shapes the long-term physical development of a jurisdiction's planning area. It is going to articulate the vision and strategy for future development in Lawndale. It establishes the long-range land use, transportation services, conservation and growth goals and policies. It provides the basis for judging future projects for private development and whether it aligns with the city's long-term vision. And it informs residents, developers, decision makers and other jurisdictions of the policy that will guide development within Lawndale. The general plan development was developed with public feedback. It's based on what the state requirements are and also the existing conditions. And those three items came together to help develop the general plan, proposed general plan update. The public feedback portion of the general plan was developed with community input. For all the public workshops and meetings, the city of Lawndale conducted extensive bilingual outreach in both English and Spanish, using a wide variety of methods and tools to inform and encourage the community to participate in the update process. Tools and methods used to inform were included in the general plan website, the focus group briefings, an email distribution list, in-person and virtual workshops, and online surveys and polls. The city hosted a total of eight workshops between February and December of 2021, each one addressing a different topic focus, and that included issues and opportunities, land use, transportation and housing. Sorry, wrong way. The California Government Code dictates which topics must be addressed in the general plan, and recent bills address housing, environmental justice, transportation and climate change. This includes SB 1000, which requires environmental justice goals if there are disadvantaged communities or other low-income groups in the, in the planning area, which there are within the city of Lawndale. AB 1358, which is the Complete Streets Act, and AB 379, the Climate Change Resiliency Planning, which requires the safety element to address locally applied climate adaptation and resiliency strategies. Failure to address these topics can impact access to state, federal and grant funding and put the city in legal jeopardy. So it was incorporated in the general plan update. The third component for the general plan was existing conditions. The existing conditions report that was prepared as part of the general update is intended to be used in conjunction with the general plan. It's a snapshot of the city at a moment in time, which in this case was in 2022. It addresses all the topics that are covered in the general plan update. It identifies the regulatory framework, shows existing traffic measurements. It includes maps, tables and charts. And again, it works with the general plan. The Lawndale General Plan is a dynamic policy document that identifies the community's vision for the future and provides a framework for the city's long-term growth and development. The general plan reflects the community's values and desires and addresses important issues such as land use, urban design, mobility, housing, resource management, public safety, economic development, community facilities and public health. Although it's updated periodically to reflect changing market conditions, new legislative requirements and modern opportunities, the intent of the general plan update is to lay the foundation for long-term decision-making that stands the test of time. The community vision that helped inform the general plan update was that Lawndale is a tight-knit community that cares for its residents, community that has quality housing opportunities for all, that it creates a mixed-use activity center along Hawthorne Boulevard where people can live, work, shop and socialize, supported by a robust, resilient local economy and a sustainable development patterns that promote a healthy and active community. There are, there are state mandated elements that are always required as part of the general plan, including land use, circulation, conservation, open space noise, safety, housing, environmental justice, as well as the opportunity to include optional tasks. The two optional elements that were included include economic development and community facilities in the general plan update. Each element is made up of goals, policies and actions. Goals is an affirmative statement of the desired future conditions. Policies are also statements, usually starting with a verb that guide the decision-making and specify an intended level of commitment. For example, require versus support or encourage were used. And actions are implementation steps to ensure goals and policies are carried out where the progress is actually measurable and sometimes with given a specific time to have that action implemented. One of the major components of the update was updating the city's land use map. It simplifies the residential land use designation by combining the single-family medium-density and multifamily low-density land uses. However, it did not change any of the permitted existing residential densities. It also created a Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan land use designation. It created a housing opportunity overlay designation for implementation of the land use. It re-designated public school sites from open space to public facilities for better consistency. And it re-designated the rail right-of-way from public facilities to open space to potentially accommodate a future multi-use trail and re-designated parcels to be consistent with existing uses and zoning. As part of the process, we did build-out comparison. You can see here the existing on-the-ground conditions, what the existing general plan potential build-out is and what the general plan update potential build-out would be. The change over the current general plan build-out would be an additional 2,000, approximately 2,000 units, potentially an additional 8,700 people or new residents, 280,000 non-residential square footage, which would include institutional, commercial and retail uses, and approximately almost nearly 500 jobs over the existing general plan. The build-out factors used to come to these numbers included the parcel size and shape, development standards and financial feasibility. Both general plan and the EIR are required to look at the potential build-out of the land use map, and that was the basis for the environmental analysis. Development is expected to occur at lower levels than what the maximum development potential is. And future projects are still required to submit a project-specific development application and go through the development process. New developments will occur over time, this build-out, based on market conditions. To comply with CEQA, an environmental impact report was done for the general plan update. An EIR is how it's typically referred to. It's an informational document that identifies and decloses the anticipated environmental effects of implementing a project as required by the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. It also acts as a forum for public participation in the environmental review process, and it does not advocate or promote the project. It just provides the information of what the environmental impacts would be. For this project, there were no specific development projects proposed or would be approved as part of this general plan update. The draft EIR was prepared and circulated for public review between on August 15th and was available for review until October 2nd of 2023. The city received seven comment letters from agencies, individuals and organizations on the project. The final EIR included the response to comment for the seven comment letters received. Staff responded to all the comments received. And the policy document, the general plan update, was developed to be self-mitigating. And through the proposed general plan policies and actions, it reduced potential environmental impacts. So there are no separate mitigation measures or a separate mitigation monitoring program in the draft EIR and the final EIR. It's all based on the goals, policies and actions in the proposed general plan update. In some cases, there was not additional feasible mitigation measures that were available to further mitigate potential impacts to less than significant impacts. The EIR identified significant unavoidable environmental impacts related to air quality, cumulative air quality, greenhouse gas emissions and cumulative greenhouse gas emissions. So next steps to the general plan implementation include the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan update. The Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan update will provide specific direction regarding the redevelopment of Hawthorne Boulevard, which serves as the city's primary transportation route corridor of economic activity and community focal point. Additionally, there will be a zoning code update that will update the zoning code and map for consistency with the proposed general plan update. I will now turn it over to Ms. Chavez to give the staff recommendations.
Thank you, Ashley. Staff recommends that the city council do the following. Approve resolution number CC 231249 and approve and certify the final environmental impact report and adopt resolution CC 2312-048 recommending, excuse me, approving the general plan 2045 comprehensive update. And staff is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Conduct a public hearing?
No, no, we're going to do that right now.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. And if there's any technical questions you want to clear up before we open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to clarify for the council. The appropriate, most proper fashion adopting an EIR with the draft and the final, not talking about any outside agency, but deferring a draft and then finally adopting a final EIR year later, you know, technically is problematic under CEQA. But I just noticed that we're not doing that. Just want to highlight that to the council and the committee that we're adopting them together.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that highlighting that. So this is a public hearing. Are there any technical questions you want to clarify before we open up the public hearing?
I do have one question on the build-out comparison. The 2019 potential build-outs, that's, is that the requirement of the state or is that what we're thinking we're going to be able to add?
Councilwoman Quavis, I'm going to refer Ashley to answer your question. Thank you.
So the, the comparison to the current general plan is just for illustrative purposes. The requirements of the general plan and the draft EIR is to compare what the existing on-the-ground conditions are with the potential build-out. So we looked at the variety of build-out factors, including past projects and what we anticipate the development would be, and that's what the build-out numbers are based on. So it is the existence of the build-out numbers in both the land use element and within the EIR is based on requirements. Again, the, the comparison to the current general plan is for illustrative purposes so you can compare apples to apples, what your existing is and what the proposed general plan build-out would be.
Thank you.
That answers your question.
I have one, one question. Can you give me an example of, it speaks on page 22, project impacts about the significant and unavoidable environmental impacts related to air quality, greenhouse gases? Can you give an example of what these significance and unavoidable?
Yes. So for example, for both air quality and greenhouse gas, we would look at cumulative as being a potentially significant unavoidable. So with a programmatic EIR, there's not a specific project we're looking at. We can't look and say we're going to build 20 housing units and we're going to build, we know it's going to generate this number of car trips and this amount of construction. So a lot of it's speculative. So you look at it and say, we know potentially there could be this number of build-out, even though we know technology will change. We know that creating denser urban environments actually decrease the amount of emissions. We have to look at the information available for a programmatic level and say, yes, there could potentially be significant and unavoidable impacts due to air quality. What we're looking at is that the south, the south coast air quality management district has certain standards of what thresholds that we would need to be met. But because we're looking at a 20-year timeline, it, almost every general plan update we've done, I've seen, has these as significant unavoidable impacts because those thresholds are created for one project, whereas we're looking at projects that could potentially occur over 20 years. So that is why when you look at cumulative impacts and when you look at even individual impacts, without looking at a specific project, it is a more conservative estimate to say it would be a significant unavoidable impact. And it also gives the city more flexibility to tier future projects off of these conclusions.
And what are we looking at as far as environmental justice, which is one of the elements? What are we trying, what's the goal there?
So the goal of an environmental justice element is to look at potentially disadvantaged or low-income communities and ensure that those are the communities that have traditionally had to bear the burden, where industrial is placed, where there is next to freeways. And so how to create goals and policies to help mitigate those potential environmental justice impacts issues. So it looks a lot at creating better access to active transportation, to transit, to healthy foods, to better healthcare. So those are the type of goals and policies located within the environmental justice element. It also includes that it's woven within the fabric of the general plan update. It refers back to a lot of the existing elements that, that includes references to the land use element, mobility element. So Lawndale, I believe most of Lawndale is considered a disadvantaged community. So it really is looking at things we can do community-wide to help provide better access and environmental justice to the residents of Lawndale.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that, that explanation. Let's see, does any other question before we open the public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
When it comes to zoning, if I have a business that is zoned for X thing and we change it, if I sell, does the business keep the same zoning or how does it work when you do the zoning?
If we, we are still working on the zoning update. If we do end up changing any zones, which we don't plan on to, we're, we're just going to keep the same. If we do, it would be considered a non-conforming use. So you can keep what's there because it's legal, but it's non-conforming to the, whatever it is that you changed the zone to, so the, the current code. And there are certain things you can do to that. Let's say it's a residential and a commercial area. You can maintain it and you could like add certain percentage of additions to the house. But at the moment that you come in and you want to change it to something else, then you would have to comply with the current commercial zone.
Okay. Thank you.
And just as a clarification follow-up, for the land use designations that did change in the project, most of them were to conform with the existing zoning to be more consistent what was actually already on the ground and there in that location. Or for example, with the, the schools, changing from open space to public facilities was a cleanup item. So most of the changes made were to make it conform better to what was already there. So there would actually be less non-conforming between the general plan and land uses and the zoning.
So we didn't make any zoning change? We just updated what we have, currently have to?
This will just update the land use designations. The zoning, as Jared said, will, will follow up with the zoning update. And so those changes again are all related to anything non-conforming. The biggest change is the change to the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan, and that will all then just reference directly to the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan as, as it's both land, permitted land use and zoning.
Thank you.
Okay. With, with that, it is 7:20. I open up a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Are there any wishing to provide comments in this matter? Please do so at this time. Yes, sir.
Hello, honorable city council members. Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me. My name's Ross Donaldson. I'm the president and CEO of Critical Innovations, which is a medical device company based at 4228 Marine Avenue in Lawndale, just a couple blocks away from here. We're a low-impact operations, our low-impact operations include research and development, laboratory testing and manufacturing of medical devices and other related products, primarily in the trauma space. And these uses are currently allowed in our current zone, which is CM Commercial Manufacturing. Our team has rapidly grown over the last couple of years. We're currently hiring. We've reached over 20 employees and we want to keep our operations here in Lawndale as we expand. We're currently under contract for the property across the street from us, which is 4221 Marine, which is the Way to God Church, if you're familiar with that currently, and is, which is currently also zoned for CM with an industrial land use designation and therefore allows the same uses on it. The general plan update proposes to change the land use designation of that church to allow for more commercial and residential uses, which, with a housing overlay, which we don't have any problem with, but we just respectfully, respectfully request that the general plan update and any future zoning updates continue to also allow the currently permitted CM uses, as is currently. uses as is currently zoned for that property. I'd also like to thank the staff that we've talked with previously, who have been super responsive, and we're very appreciative of that. And thank you, and we look forward to collaborating with you as we grow the local economy.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Are there any others? With that, we will close the public comments. We actually will close the hearing. At seven twenty-two, the hearing is closed. I don't want to discuss with any deliberations.
I'm gonna ask, since this was a pretty hefty item, you know, there's a lot to go through on this packet and it just came out Thursday, and I know it's been open for review, but since we're formally, you know, approving this, I'm gonna ask if we can continue this just to give people more time to review and, you know, between now and the next meeting, if that's possible.
I don't have any problem with that myself. What's, what's the consensus of the board?
I'm absolutely okay with that because I could spend more time with it. It was pretty big.
Yeah, it was.
And then, just one thing, the resolution has the attorney's name as George Murphy, so that just needs to be changed.
In fact, I reviewed the resolution and didn't catch that. It's a little embarrassing. So if you're going to go that way, the proper, we would actually need a motion that would be moved to continue the matter open to the council's next meeting, at which time any members of the public and the council would have more opportunity to put by testimony. So thank you all very much.
Absolutely.
I'll make the motion. Do we continue it?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
So the motions being made by, as far as that we continue this item to the next council, council meeting, I think it was seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? With that being the case, let's take a vote on continuing this item.
The motion on item number five passes unanimously.
Okay, with that, we will continue this item for the next council agenda. And those who provided comments, you don't have to re-provide your comments. Those are a matter of record and we'll keep those on the record for consideration. Thank you. Okay. Okay, right here. Next item, item six. Awarding a contract for traffic services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item is to award a one-year on-call traffic engineering services contract. So on occasion, we receive traffic items that may need review by a traffic engineer. While many of these requests can be handled by our internal staff, sometimes a request require a little more expertise in traffic engineering. So this on-call list provides a resource of firms to consult with to provide analysis and recommendations as needed. We have about eighty thousand dollars within our budget that can cover some of these costs. It probably won't run into that amount. Staff recommends that city council award an on-call traffic engineering services agreement to Zimmerman Engineering, Advantech Consulting Engineers and TransTech Engineers for a term of one year with an option to extend up to four one-year extensions. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, council, I was gonna add that we'll watch it closely, anything that goes over my signature amount. But I mentioned today that we may need to take the council anyways, just so the council's informed. But occasionally on the traffic committee, as the commission, the council is well aware, sometimes we need that expertise that, you know, staff don't have internally to help us.
Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Prior to making any decision with whatever is being reported to your department, is that gonna be brought up to us, like for example, signals?
It would be brought in a traffic commission meeting, and if needed, we will certainly bring it to council's attention.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What is the pleasure of this body concerning?
I'll make a motion to go staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
So the motion's been made by Mr. Pat Kearney. We go with the staff recommendation and Hoffman-Gorman second the motion. Other than any discussion, the council please vote.
For item number six, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'll be quick. I want to thank staff and Public Works and Community Services Department for putting on a great angel tree and all the residents and the council that participated. It was, I'd have to say, anecdotally, it was a lot more busier than previous years. It was definitely, it was great. I asked Mr. Estes to add an additional sled run. Maybe we can even add another one next year and then expand the play area. That happened, it was really well attended and folks really enjoyed it. The second item, I just want to let the council know, I was informed by my deputy city manager that there was a technical difficulty with the YouTube channel, so we're down, but we will post the council meeting afterwards right away and we'll be working on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, items from mayor and council members, let's start with Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
I also attended the angel tree lighting ceremony.
Well, I'm kinda doing them out of order. Well, you know what, let's back up because I was kinda doing them out of order, but I was gonna get to that item. Let's go with item seven, only because he had, he was first in. Let's go with seven, item seven. Item, item seven, Mr. Pat Kearney.
Yes, I brought this to council's attention because I see our board of supervisors send letters out to everybody and their mother to give money for the sea line. So I think that was inappropriate for her to do without, you know, at least letting us know. I know she was at Angel Tree and she said how great the city of Lawndale is, but I'm totally against the letter she sent. I think we should rebut these letters ourselves. That's my personal opinion. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sean, whoever.
That's in the, item seven. Okay. Any discussion on that item? Not, the item, the spread of items, council.
I believe we have people to speak on. Can we do that?
Are there any, excuse me, item seven?
Sea line?
This is Holly Osborne from Madonna Beach. I didn't really intend to speak on item seven. I just intended to provide you with the information because it's pretty detailed and I just thought if you're gonna discuss it, that would enable you to just learn more. You can read, I don't need to discuss it. Do you have any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
With that, we will, let's go to our regular items from the council members. If there's no one else wanting to add anything to that. Hoffman-Gorman here.
All right, I attended the angel tree lighting ceremony and I too thought it was absolutely terrific. At one point, there were so many kids playing and running across the snow, I thought, my goodness, and we increased it this year and it could even be doubled. And about that time, the supervisor did walk behind me and one of the, and mentioned, wow, this is really great, some of these kids have never seen snow before. And to echo what one of my compadres up here said to me later is, maybe we should be asking her for a donation to increase our size of snow for our event because it is, that was a big event for our community. And so, thank you to Mike and his staff for putting that on for us. He just does an excellent job every year.
Okay, let's hear it from councilman.
Okay. I attended three events, Senator Bradford's drive-through, turkey, food and turkey giveaway, as well attended, was at El Camino. I saw several Lawndale families there, which I was wait to see that. I attended Angel Tree, it was fantastic. The snow box, I called it, was fantastic, except they got a little while after while they start throwing snowballs at people. And then I attended the E S M O A, possibly S, open house. It was very nice. They had a couple of things that took me back to the sixties when I was a young lad and on the dark side of the force, but anyway, with that, I pass it on.
Councilman, sorry.
On Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, I attended along with Mayor Pro Tem Cuevas, the homeless solutions standing committee. You know, I'm honestly having a brain fog right now, but I remember good things. We're making strides and we're working, and our contracted security guards are really helping alleviate, you know, some of the issues that we've previously had, if, I don't know if staff wants to.
And then mayor council, we did a quick survey, informal survey, MSD staff, and we found around roughly seven, we didn't go in the Caltrans areas, we just estimated, but we have seven homeless, I think Lacta last year reported twenty plus, but we think we're down a little bit. So we're still checking and verifying, but we did an informal count ourselves.
Yes, thank you. And then, oh, oh, and I guess it's exciting to note that the sheriff's, our staff's gonna have training with the, what is the team?
The Met Team.
The Met Team, right, yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
So, which I've heard during some conferences, some give reports on that, so that's exciting. And then I did also attend the angel tree lighting. You know, I was doing volunteer work too, but it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun. It was pretty packed and I have to say, it's a great event. I think even people from other towns came to take advantage, so it was a lot of fun. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Madam Pro Tem Cuevas?
I attended the homeless solution commission or committee, and I want to thank Michael and his team for a great job in reducing our transients on the streets. I also attended the Esmoa Open House, which is the new museum located at one-four-nine-two-nine Hawthorne Boulevard, right next door to the W S S. It's open, it's a nonprofit organization, it's not your typical museum, it's very liberal, you find all types of arts, so, and it's free to the community, so if you have time, please go visit them. Angel Tree Lighting, I attended that. I want to thank staff for a great job. And I would like to see, since we're having these tree lightings on a Friday, if we could keep the snow and the rink for Saturday also for residents to enjoy, because like I could see that the snow was there all weekend, so it would be nice to, you know, allow them to play out there and maybe with the skating rink too. That would be something.
We could bring that up at budget and just, we could take a look at that if the council wants to consider it.
And with that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I also attended the new art gallery in town, Esmoa, Esmoa. If you haven't had a chance to visit, you should really stop by, it's a really nice art gallery, very intimate setting, but they have a lot of unique pieces of art, whether sculptures, paintings, you name it. I'm not, I don't know a lot about art, but I know good art when I see it. They have some really nice pieces and I just want to thank them for choosing Lawndale to relocate from one of the other South Bay cities. And I look forward to working with them, in particular, getting our youth involved, whether it's our youth advisory committee or through the schools or what have you. They have a lot of programs that they would like to see, you know, partnering with the city, city of Lawndale, so I want to welcome them to the city of Lawndale, so very good opportunity, very nice museum. It's definitely something that when you have relatives coming town, you want to show them that, you know, so that's a great attraction to the city of Lawndale. The Angel Tree Lighting event, I want to thank Mike Estes and his team and all the volunteers for that event spectacular. Every year, these events, whether it's the Halloween hunt or the angel tree lighting ceremony, it gets bigger and bigger and better and better and well organized. A lot of people came out, a lot of children were there, everybody was having a good time. It was really good. And you know what was an extra, to me was an extra bonus that I didn't know was gonna be there, even though he was kinda grippy? The Grinch was there. So if you didn't see The Grinch, The Grinch was live and in living color and you heard how The Grinch stole Christmas, but this was how The Grinch got saved because The Grinch was brought to you by the Restoration Life Church right down the street and they're having a play. I can't recall the day, I thought I had the little.
Twenty-fourth of December.
Twenty-fourth of December, How The Grinch Got Saved, you know, at Restoration Life Church. It's a play, and so The Grinch was on hand and he was a hit. Is The Grinch, is he was on hit, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, he's so grumpy, you don't ever know, you know, what's going on with him or what have you, but the kids loved him and they took a lot, he took a lot of pictures, you know, and I think it was really nice, and so I want to thank Restoration Life Church for sharing The Grinch with us. But all in all, it was a very good event and the weather, you couldn't ask for better. You know, it was warm this year, even though there was snowing outside. Even though it was snowing, it was kinda, kinda warm, you know, but we had a good time. So I just want to thank the staff and all the volunteers for that and we look forward to doing it again next year.
One more thing.
One more thing.
Really quick, I want to remind all of our residents that Santa, the Santa sleigh is going around the city this week and next week, so look at your Lawndalian for the schedule. And he leaves at six P M. and ends about eight o'clock, so look for Santa.
All right. No, no, thank, thank you, thank you for reminding everyone that. Okay, with that, we do have a few closed sessions, three in particular, and I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us the provision of our closed session that we will go under.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council's going to go into closed session now. One for a conference with the labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the city's bargaining unit under government code five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six, one matter of existing litigation that's been filed against the city under government code five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-one, and a continued performance evaluation under five-four-nine-five-seven-B of the city manager. More, a more complete description of each of those three is in the written agenda if any member of the public wants to read it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, we will go into closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council was briefed on items nine, ten and eleven in closed session. No reportable action was taken on any item tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's adjourned in time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at six-thirty P M. on Monday, December eighteenth. And these here are council chambers, we are now adjourned.